About.
Okay.
Starting, we're going to call this meeting, the God with city council order. This is meeting is being done under the open meetings act of Texas. We have people who have signed up to to speak during our public section. If you've not signed us in the line two, the papers are over there. At this time, we're going, we do have a forum present. Uh, we are going to do the pledge of allegiance and after we do the pledge of allegiance, standing for the orange. Pastor Death Stanley from the Joshua Assembly Path Church. Love yours, sir.
Big value, man. Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, that we can come and do this together as a free nation. Father, I I thank you for your many blessings. And I, Father, I pray for each civil servant here, I pray, pray for the police officers, the government, each and everyone that you put your biggest, strongest angels around them always, Lord. And Father, I thank you for our elected officials. God, you give them wisdom, knowledge, and strength that only can come from God. Rachel, you bless this time. Bless each and every family that's here, Lord, in your precious holy name. And everybody said, amen.
Sir. That's. If there's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and do the behalf of the national day of prayer. Pastor Stanley. Whereas throughout history, Americans lifted up in fervent prayer, prayers to God on behalf of our nation, from the first gatherings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and treated those they served and represented, joined in prayer, including the officers for their immigration and dependence. The dead, the officers of their birth wrote that they, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assembled with the secret judge of the world and carried on to present a presidential proclamation such as gladries of the nation to join him and have to give God's continued guidance, mercy, and prevention. And whereas the national day of prayer has not only been a part of our heritage, it's declared by the first continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five, but it is a public law established in the United States Congress in nineteen fifty-two, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress of President Reagan with public law one hundred dash three oh seven in nineteen eighty-eight, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and directly the president of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a national day of prayer. And whereas in our state and across America, the observance of the national day of prayer will be held on Thursday in May in twenty-four, one twenty-three, with the theme, pray fervently in righteousness and veil of night, based on the James verses in James five sixteen. B, the effective fervent prayer of righteousness and events. And whereas every first Thursday of May on the national day of prayer, we not only express our faith and exercise our freedom in prayer, but unite our hearts and voices in personal prayer and holy gatherings throughout our city and across our American with fervent praise, repentance, love, and humble intercession for our neighbors and nation, holding to the fast promises throughout the holy scriptures that the Lord hears and avails much as he answers the faith-filled prayers of his people. Now here is your right Scott Kimball, Mayor of the City of Joshua, who hereby proclaim May fourth, twenty twenty-three as a national day of prayer throughout the city of Joshua, and I commend this service to all of our citizens. National day of prayer will be observed at True Life Church. Uh, seven thirty-one. It was just down the road here, about a couple of blocks, uh, on, at seven P M. Pastor Stanley and his uh, church is going to be, put it to everything together and lead it. You're all invited, please attend if you can. Chief Counselor, do you want to introduce your officer?
Bring you back to work. Right, maybe. Way to move, so. Uh, Mayor Counselor, uh. I'd like to introduce Officer Chris Rodriguez and Officer Katie Grammerino. Um, very excited to say that we're not fully staffed with these last hires. Push on the spot a little bit, but uh, we are kind of the unicorn, I mean, long, which is very difficult to track and maintain. And very proud to say that, uh, your support, uh, we're in search of track, not only certified, even if we're ready to track. Other than come with. I can't do this, uh, we won't mention the city next to us, but they did come from us with another, another city here in Johnson County, but uh, Officer Rodriguez comes to us with thirteen years experience, uh, and also Adrian Brenner comes to us with nine years experience. Officer Rodriguez is fulfilling our practical role, uh, one of my objectives that happened itself in the past, is that technical position, dedicated position, and he is making quite a lot of new finances. Uh, and Officer Graham Brenner comes to us with a, a plethora of experience, with administrative and C I D experience. And so as the department grows, the city grows, uh, we're looking for great things, and from there, they're educational. We welcome them aboard and thank you, traditions.
You don't get more than you. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, thank you, David. Six thirty-seven, we're going to go into our work session. I have number one for you, discuss and question, go into the budget report and financial statements, which twenty-four degrees, recap.
The, uh, report, which has lots of negatives in it, will hopefully be cleaned up with the passage of the budget amendment tonight, but the, for this month, we've had the just the big things, we, uh, clean trans now, uh, we made that payment out in November. Um, for the, uh, for our annual membership, they have started building again for the last, I believe, three years. Uh, they stopped that building cycle during COVID and it was covered by federal funding, and so now we're picking that back up. That's something that we haven't seen, but we did know it was coming. Uh, we've got a few overages, um, in our subscriptions, I T services moving along, we're getting an update from them tonight. Uh, probably the biggest thing that, uh, remains to stick out is the, um, waterline infrastructure agreement with, uh, the special utility district. Everything else has been fairly, uh, routine, nothing significant, we, we do have. It doesn't reflect here, I'm, I'm told that our first out engine, engine seventy-seven, the repairs have been made, it's been down for several weeks. Uh, going through a process of elimination, and they did find the problem. They're working with us now on the bill because so much of the narrowing down process really wasn't necessary, and there were problems there, and they've recognized that. Uh, so the chief and I believe, uh, the captain are working with them, uh, working on that price. The truck will be picked up tomorrow, and I expect will be put back in service, um, very quickly. With that, if you have any questions, I'll, uh, I'll be happy to address.
I have any questions? Okay. Five and two then. Discuss, discussion on homestead exemption.
Apparently, we have a five thousand dollar homestead exemption that the city enacted, um, two, three year, two, two years ago, three years ago, um, at the, and the, the other cities, there are a few cities in the county that also offer that at five thousand dollars. There are none that are above that. The mayor asked that I explore some opportunities to see if we could better that exemption um, for the residents, and we're looking into that, but right now it looks like um, that based on our numbers, it's either a certain percentage or five thousand dollars, whichever is greater. And so it appears that it's done in five thousand dollar increments. We're trying to research and find out if it can be something less uh, before we, because once we said it, we go up, we cannot go back. And it's capped for us at twenty thousand dollars. And so we're, we're looking at that, there's a process and a deadline we have to hit. So if that is something that the council still wants me to pursue, then we will start that, we'll gather those answers and prepare that. It has to be voted on and approved, I believe, by, uh, July, there's a date in July, um, that it has to be filed and approved in order for it to be enacted. So if that's your desire, we'll continue to do that. Um, we're also watching very closely what the legislature is doing, there, there's bills that just moving through, um, that has, I believe, come out of committee that uh, is offering a homestead exemption on school taxes that'll increase from twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. Uh, and then the state is going to fund, provide additional funding to make that amount up, so um, that's a pretty big hit that, or bump that could be on the way for, for the taxpayers through school taxes. Um, but right now, there's nothing, there's nothing as far as I know about local government, but we have the ability to go up to twenty thousand dollars, but five thousand dollars will, will be difficult, uh, or it could come with some difficulty, so we're gonna, before we do it, I want to make sure there's some options. So if that's still something you guys want to do, then we'll continue to pursue that and have that ready for you in May.
So if we, uh, the latest till May or even June for the final vote, would we still have time?
Absolutely, mister.
Will that give you enough time for budget preparation?
Yeah, because it, it, it won't take effect until obviously the next year, and so we'll be able to, we won't start working on the budget till the end of June, but if it's, we will get serious about it in July when that's when all the, uh, appraisals come out, the, the if we get certified values come out in July, and so we'll know by then if you're gonna do it, so we'll be able to plug that in. So I'm, what I want to do is weigh that between, is that a better option, or is there a tax reduction that might be better? Uh, as I explained to the mayor this morning, I believe that, um, the way we are situated currently with the growth that we've had, we're probably going to exceed that known revenue rate this year. Um, because of all the, the new home building and, and stuff that's gone on, so we may end up lowering the tax rate to get under that number. So it, I'm not sure that a combination of both will be able to sustain, but we'll start plugging those numbers in.
Hey, also any questions? Okay, we would not, I have no, we didn't discuss, do you update on I P infrastructure, including our broadband connectivity?
Mr. Patrick.
Yeah.
Overboardage here to go over some of your questions with you guys.
He did. It was a couple of weeks ago. See if I can get it. Okay.
They have a copy of it.
Are you, I'll have a copy of it.
They did, and they're packed.
So I'm not sure, I believe we discussed last time how our plan to pare down the project was, was going to affect the city, so our, our design currently is a fiber backbone down Main Street. This will serve multiple purposes. It will connect all the city buildings, uh, on Main Street. The animal shelter, public works, and, uh, parks, thank you, uh, will all still connect through a, a new point of point. Currently, the antenna that's on the roof is old and it drops signal quite a bit. So we're gonna upgrade that. Everything that, all the infrastructure we're planning on putting in the ground will serve the city for probably thirty years. Um, it will also help you keep your data safe. Right, only since we're gonna be moving P V in with city hall, we're, we're gonna have a connection down that street. Uh, sitting there waiting, but till that project is underway, we're gonna light up this building. And P V currently, um, our plan is, along with the fiber backbone, is to create a public access to Wi-Fi in the parks. Uh, the other part of that is to upgrade the cameras in throughout the city and add cameras at park for primary. I don't know if we discussed this previously, but the cameras that were installed last year, year ago, year and a half ago. Year and a half ago, um, when they were installed, they were end of life. You're also not there. They don't, they don't meet the no Chinese camera requirement, um, fortunately, so uh, the, those are gonna have to go away. The good news is, we're gonna put new cameras in as part of this project throughout, throughout the city, we'll replace all the existing cameras and add cameras at the parks. All of those will be able to be relocated to the new building. So go out for the uses. Do you have any questions on that so far?
So our current connectivity with public works, parks, and all that's done through a wireless link, currently, we have a wireless link on public TV connecting those, those buildings. Yes, that is correct, uh, if we're, we're putting the, the black fiber in. Well, yeah, why, why would we not go, we, it's just an additional cost.
We're, we're trying to do a cost, a cost effective solution since, as we talked to Mike, most of the buildings are going, going away in the next three years. Is that all right, Mike, or may do that?
Possibly.
And, and that, we just didn't want any perfect costs. Uh, we're already gonna lose this building, we think, when we made the screen. The reason we decided to stop here and parks, there, there's multiple reasons. That will solve our immediate issue and give us what we need for connectivity now. Secondly, uh, into the future, you know, we're in talks with E S D as well, to connect Burleson to the sheriff office and potentially, uh, E S D. And part of our talks, if you go to, um, you go to the slide four, excuse me, slide five. The other way. Slide five, so those are two carriers that are already running up this street, there's one right here, one right back over here. They go, they both go the same direction. This, this will be the only route going this direction. It will give us the ability, we, we've talked to both of these carriers, uh, I believe it was Windstream and, uh, Z O. Uh, these are both tier one carriers. Um, we, we've talked to both of them about leasing some of our fiber for access, um, they said, until it's in the ground, it's, it's all worth, you know, that we can really propose daily, like. But because there is no other fiber going that direction, uh, it's possible for us to lease it to them, parts of it, we're gonna have ninety-six strands, so we're gonna have lots of it, city's only gonna use more. Let them connect all the city. Um, that'll give us, you know, ninety-two strands to be able to lease back. Um, we have talked to the sheriff office, as you know, working with Josh County on some other things. When this new CAD system gets installed, we're gonna need to get the I think Jeff talked about this, we're gonna need to get the data from the old CAD system. They've gotta get it, they've gotta transfer somehow. And the only, the only connection is gonna be, Burleson's right here, uh, we're one seventy-four, Main Street, me, they're about four hundred feet up, up one seventy-four. So we're right there at the park. Our plan is to when the sheriff wants to connect, we'll have them fund that part of the project for the connection, and we'll be able to lease back some of that for them for connectivity back to Burleson. Our goal is to connect the sheriff office, Joshua, E S D, and Burleson at some point in the near future, which will be a revenue stream for the city for, for Joshua. Did that answer your question?
Yes, okay.
So go to slide five, I think we discussed uh, the use of the fiber. Um, it also gives us the ability to lease it to self carriers, and once it's in the ground, we have, we have the leverage to go and talk and pursue these other carriers to lease that, that fiber from us, right? Um, that's really what gives us the leverage. On, uh, slide seven, as I, as I discussed momentarily, we will be providing public Wi-Fi. But Wi-Fi, the outdoor Wi-Fi that will pose you to put in will broadcast for about a mile. So it will give access to folks in the area as well as in the park. So, uh, we have, we have quite a bit of coverage there, so it should be a fairly strong signal for anybody, if anybody in the city needs public Wi-Fi, they can go to the park and have public Wi-Fi. I know we talked about, um, other phases of this project, we'll have the ability to tie into this at any time and expand it if, if we need to in the future. Um, all of that's gonna be built into this part of the project. Okay. Slide eight. Later, it eliminates the need for multiple internet connections. Currently, we're using, um, internet connections here, we've got an internet connection at fire, and we got one more. P D and annex, yeah, so our plan is to create environment where we have a redundant circuit, so it will automatically, if one of them fails, it will automatically fail over to the others to keep, to keep the city up. This is how we design most of the modern cities now, um, for reliability for, for our peace officers and well, it's fire, to make sure they stay connected. Uh, plan is to put a connection, a lit connection, and I'll explain what a lit connection is. Lit connection at, at fire and a lit connection here. Two different carriers. What that gives us is diverse, uh, ability to use different carriers because they're going down different paths. Uh, lit services is the, the services that will get you to the internet. With our dark fiber allows the city to communicate within, within the facilities, all the buildings with each other, to share data on a private dedicated network, as well as share those internet signals. So those lit services will come in, write our dark fiber, broadcast Wi-Fi, all of that on our private network. And like I said, uh, we'll have multiple, uh, slides, which, which will allow us to expand on the network at any time, or the city even that wants to bring services somewhere else. On slide nine, so these are the estimated costs for the project, uh, the dark fiber backbone, which is a run down Main Street. Uh, fiber segment and slight point settings, those boxes, hardware, the fiber, um, cameras and power component for parks and the city, all itself, and, you know, ancillary buildings for the cameras. Uh, Wi-Fi connectivity, that will be at the park. And then installation and configuration of the public network. If we, yes.
The main purpose of the, of the city, but with ARPA funds, if we choose, if y'all choose to use any type of ARPA funds, by providing public Wi-Fi to the park and also front prevention capabilities in the park, it allows us to use ARPA funds, but the primary purpose for all of this is to, to provide a secure, I guess, closed network for the city for now and into the future, but, and just icing on the cake is if we were to ever decide to sell off any of the strands, we would have the capability of recovering some of the costs.
We don't.
But we're not providing like the actual internet service, we're providing a connection to a internet service provider to then resell, so. But there's multiple pieces of it, but this would allow us to upgrade and get in compliance with all of our here across the city, but also to provide much better security coverage for the park. Because, you know, y'all been talking about doing some pretty significant ARPA agreements, and it would actually allow us to, to control some of the vandalism and possession.
And that, that's our biggest thing is, just extremely network here, keeping it secure, making sure we're compliant with all of these here for and getting out in front of the Joshua's growing and getting, getting it to grow like all the city here in Johnson County. Um, there's a lot of this going on, and we're doing a lot of these projects, it's important to the future of the city.
How far does it go down, does it reach out? Joshua Station?
It's gonna go, it's gonna go
Joshua Fire Station?
Joshua Station. Crusher, shelter, fire, air wings can stop here. Yeah, there's a map on. He goes, he goes, he goes, yes. Fly, breathe. We're gonna stop here with, with the ability to add on to it.
Okay, yeah, so first phase.
First phase, correct. And, and this is the biggest part, the backbone part is the biggest part. This is the biggest part of the infrastructure project. You know, into the future, um, if, let's say E S D wants to connect, or Johnson County Sheriff wants to connect, we can have a joint venture project with them, there's lots of options in, in the future. If a carrier wants to pull some fiber on the network, light up an area, we can do joint ventures with them as well. So a lot of opportunity for for fund use for different, different Any other questions?
Good. While I'm not here, does any, do you need any I T updates? Um, why don't you just kind of give us a quick rundown of the seven hundred and thirty-seven, uh, or tickets you've gotten this way, um, that's come through.
So we, we, in the last few weeks, we moved the city to new servers. Um, the old servers, I crashed, well, one of them had crashed, we're still working on trying to retrieve that data. Um, we're trying to do it in the most cost-effective way. Some of the data recovered, the, the quote we got from the data recovery specialist, what's my point, we're helping. So we're trying to do it within the budget of what we've already paid for installing these, so we have, we have guy on staff. He's working on it, he's making progress, he'll know by Monday, uh, whether he can get the data, or he says he's made some progress on, so.
That's it, it's moving over, but it's straight and slow, because anytime it goes over a certain speed, it's, it's crashing.
Well, this, this, that was, that was server two, that was Zen two, that's the one we finally got information of, that one, the, the primary file server where a lot of things were stored. Had the interface where it connected to the network grew, it grew. And it wouldn't, we could, we could see it, but we couldn't retrieve anything. When we got here, one of those servers would crash, that's a day. We were hoping to limp them along, and it kind of got to a point where we had to buy servers and put them in, and we just didn't get to it in time to get everything moved on. Um, as far as without
The data.
The data is still there, and it's, we're gonna be able to get the data, hundred percent. It's just whether it's cost-effective or expensive, that's where we're at with that. Tickets, we've been working through, uh, the multitude tickets, but we have a couple uh, issues over at P V with cars connecting and downloading. We thought we had it fixed, uh, we are working on that. Uh, I'm hoping to have a resolution for that by Monday for them. Um, I'm gonna be, I'll be here tomorrow working on, not only fire, they got a new alarm system going in, but I'm also gonna be the backup servers or backup storage units we have here over, over to P V, put them over there in the rack, get them out of the closet here. Alice, we've worked on fuel curves. Uh, everything's still not perfect, and it probably won't be for a while yet, because a lot of our data is still on that primary server. And until we get that, that information off and load it on to the new servers, it's just gonna be, we'll have to just day-to-day operation is what we're doing, right? So it's her fault.
That's right, I touched it.
Yeah, we've got all those pretty well, so we're not taking care of the rail type mission. Yeah, we've got all those pretty well, so we're not taking care of the rail type issue. Yeah, and, and you know what, if I need a technology with perfect, I'd get out of the job. Let's say bigger garment, I can remember how, you know. It doesn't work, I mean, even Microsoft, we, we've got Microsoft issues, but we're still trying to work through. Us is about being able to function day to day. And not crashing and losing everything, you know, I think most of that has been. Mitigated, we're not losing everything every day. So that was partially because of the servers. Uh, so we're still working through uh some. Some connectivity with the police cars, uh, for offloading, we thought, like I said, we thought we had it fixed. But apparently we don't, so it's probably. Probably not that big of a deal, it's just a matter of pointing things in the right direction, rerouting them. Like I said, we, we just try to keep everything up and running at this point until we get everything settled on the new servers. And then we start mapping them and making sure everything's running smoothly now.
Uh, what about backups? Have, have, have we got things set up?
Have you had those technology backups? Moving over to P D, that other permanent home and then um. Our plan is into the future, it's a free. Following down the fire or at the new city hall, a disaster recovery location. Where we'll put that, where we'll put backups. So that everything will be cocky there and if a natural disaster hits, we have, we have redundant costs, so. Anybody else have any questions for me?
Okay, well, to, I think mayor members and city staff members. Y'all need to get anything?
Don't you probably be here?
Shell? Okay, well, it's been, been a busy week, uh, for me so far. Um, I did have the honor of going to the I S D board meeting on Monday night and presenting a. Uh, proclamation for our state champion weightlifter in the hundred eighty one pound class. Uh, that was an awesome thing to see those, the show people there, there's. Four, four of the weightlifting team that actually uh with the state and a couple of them actually placed, so that, that was really good. On Saturday the fifteenth, Molly actually attended a brunch with the Girl Scouts to present the proclamation. For uh one of our local Girl Scouts who received the Golden War. And I got to speak at Hill College to their governing class. Uh, they'll just stay away from all that service. It, it was an interesting session, uh, I did find out something about our police chief I did not know. Uh, he can't hold Shakespeare, so man of many talents. Um, we have a big event coming up Saturday. Ask the cops to share that.
Joshua United, um, it's a group of pastors from this community and some local organizations. Has teamed up to create Joshua United, um, we're planning on. About forty vendors, that's gonna be in a park, which is quite a few. Um, five bounce houses, couples obstacle courses, so it's gonna take up the whole baseball field on one side. We're gonna have a pet and zoo, twenty to twenty-five animals, including a miniature donkey. Um, animal services is gonna be there, adopting our animals. And I have a booth for the mayor and council, y'all welcome, and then there's several departments that's gonna be there. Eleven to three. Yes.
And we are running shows. Free shows. Uh, on the twenty ninth available, we have another big event coming up. The Joshua's Academy alumni association is having their annual place you, um. Mr. Merle here is chairing that, running it. Uh, doing the next job, putting everything together, do you have any, possibly how many teams you guys support?
If there's, if everybody comes, it looks like we're gonna have ten teams at this point. About forty people.
We've got several sponsors from within the city and everything, uh, the. Alumni Association does great things, but at least. Get a chance to come out here Saturday just to kind of see what's going on and everything at, at our time, it's, it's an event to be held, so. Everybody else have anything?
We are just to remind everyone that early voting starts Monday. Um, it goes on next week and then Monday to two, Monday and Tuesday, May first and second, it's seven A M to seven P M. And then election days on May sixth at the high school.
If you noticed, you've each got a packet that we put down on your place, the first one, uh. Is a rendering of the challenge horns that. Official challenge coin of the city that we're putting together. You guys will be given these to distribute to. Various people, people collectors, other council members you meet. Travel residents, things I've just gotten to be a pretty. Pretty popular collectible thing, people are starting to collect these things, myself included, and I've got them all over the place, but. Um, that'll be coming. In a few weeks and we'll get those all out to you. Also, you've got uh your official city IDs were passed out, I believe Alice put them at your place or all you should have those now. Um, actually, I think, Robert, we may still be waiting on yours, but yours in that batch?
No.
Okay, well, if we get it after your time, we'll frame it and send it to. The other thing is a packet of some information I picked up from the North Texas City Management Association. Program a, a week or so back, it's a. A collection of bills that are moving through the legislature that involve local government. From local control to losing control to changes the way the taxes are figured. Changes about appraisal base, there's quite a few. It's, as always, it's gonna be a difficult year for local government and the legislature this year. Uh, there are, they're hitting the schools to a lot of stuff too, as far as some school security and. Uh, it's, there's just a lot going on, but these are things that may be of interest to you that. T M L, uh, the legislative group are watching and tracking and. Uh, as those things change, we'll, we'll bring that stuff to y'all.
One other thing that I did wanna mention to y'all, I don't know how. Well connected you are with other cities, or something out, outsuits. Things rolling, uh, I've. Attended a luncheon the other day with three other mayors and. All three of them asked me what we were doing to make our city run smoothly. And the only answer I can give then is we have one heck of a staff. And they are doing fantastic job, they continue to, to just make this city run like the city's supposed to run. And I also told them that any of them that tried to show up to steal any, and they'll make it out of hand. Um, but uh there are some cities with some really serious issues going on. And when you hear the reasons they're, they're going on, we are truly blessed to have the sta- staff that we have and the council we have. I wanna thank you all for your service and everything you do. It's, it's important what we do, people want to believe that or. Anything else concur? All right, uh, this time we'll go into our public forum, uh. The council invites citizens to speak on any topic, however, unless the item is specifically noted on the agenda, the city council. Are under the Texas Open Meetings Act, it limits response to responding with state with specific factual information. Uh, reciting the city's existing policy for making the inquiry to visit the city staff. About the issue, therefore, no council deliberation is permitted, each person will have three minutes to speech. Ms. Anderson? Let's put that specific in there.
Thank you for letting me come, council, uh, mayor and council. Because I'm not a resident of the city anymore, but I was speaking for a bird that's near, near. Of course, it's not about, they got a big, huge problem, as I know you all know. Got, we gotta know, because you live up there too. And I'm sure, I know y'all are getting millions and millions of calls, it just seems like the, the, it. Do you know what I'm talking about, the, okay, the overgrown golf course, it, it, there's. All kinds of snakes coming up in the backyard, or is it critters and things like that, and our kids play up there, they're not on the golf. She'll shoot you, you know. I didn't say that. I didn't say it anywhere. But, but there's no, they're just, anytime I was, I mean, I've had conversations with him and I. And he's letting you know what's go, kind of basically what's going on and what they can do, what they can't do. But it just seems like there's something that's gotta be done, the grass is growing up, a lot of the residents now are starting. To at least mow what's back behind their house. And uh. Property values. Gone, that, you know, it's, it's, it's really sad situation out there, if, if. I don't know what the answer is, I'm hoping that if I bring it to you and if enough people bring it to you, that maybe you might find us an answer, so.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, uh, my name is Double Taylor, I live on the golf course. And uh, we're concerned with all the snakes and whatever coming up, also. Really concerned about fire more than anything, because it would, we don't wanna be. Having our house burned down just because of the, of the real tall grass. During winter time. It was really dry, so, and we hadn't had much rain. So I know y'all, I talked to Mike and. You Scott, and you know, see what you guys can do or help us out or something. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, she's been brought up with uh city moan and then with you.
I'll refer to our city attorney on that.
Yeah, the issue right now that's related to pending litigation, and so I know that everybody's concerned and is actively trying to have discussions on. Getting it addressed, um, and it's also a large piece of property, it's gonna take longer than anyone would hope. But there's active discussions going on, because everybody understands the concerns, but depending on the nation is what.
Is there any hope inside at all?
We're working and trying to, yes, ma'am.
They, they've mowed some stuff, uh, on part of, is my understanding, they've started, I don't know how much progress.
Good feedback.
We have made that offer through the attorneys that we will send a contractor in to mow it, um, but. So far, they have not responded to that as far as, you know, we can, we'll follow it, yeah.
Anybody else have anything they would like to say or bring up this time? Awesome.
Yeah, I see one thing real quick, do I need to stand up? Uh, yes, please state your name and address. So, uh, Deco and Marshall, one thousand seating down, just wanted to bring up real quick, I think there's some softball games going on. It's softball builds two on this week, this weekend, you guys heard that?
We don't. It's a support.
Okay, all right, that's, and that's all, I'm thinking, thank you, Deco.
Okay. We'll be on G, the consent agenda. Uh, we have a discussion considering possible action on the meeting minutes of March sixteenth to March twenty seventh. Have a motion?
I can vote for acceptance as stated.
Okay, I have a motion by Merle and taken by Antwood to accept the minutes as presented, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous, okay? We'll move into our regular hit items, number one. Discuss the center of hospital action on an ordinance through the budget amendment from the one fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Well, I apologize that by appearance, this is a colossal monster. However, um, the largest item that, what makes this um such a handful is the. Uh, partnership with the utility district on the water line, that eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar payment. Uh, which was funded through um the TIF funds, and so that is showing up, that will be. Uh, cleaned up in this amendment, some of the other things that we have uh put in place. Um, there are some, obviously, some of the technology um issues that you heard about earlier, there were some uh. Some fuel adjustments uh for the cost of fuel in a few areas. The police department, uh, we are funding an after action review of the incident that occurred at the high school. Um, back on, I believe, February the fourteenth. Uh, so that is funded, also some new vests and shields. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars just over that, but uh almost twenty thousand of that is, will be reimbursed by grant. Uh, but those funds have not been received, there's some uniform expenditures with the fire department for the new staff that was hired. And then uh some uh computer software. I believe for, that's for here, right, with council stuff, the software, six thousand dollars for the new software.
Yes, the media code.
That's the first year start of that. So the other things that you're gonna see, there's, there's been some moving around of money, we transferred. Um, moved code enforcement into the police department, so. What looks like an increase in salaries in the police department is really not, because the money was taken from the fire marshal's office, so that will, will. Will level out, also, um, some administrative assistant that was currently, that was under development services doing. Uh, garbage collections, she's been moved into administration, so. There was a move there, it looks like we've added staff, but we really haven't, it's come from somewhere else, so. The overall net is about on par with what has happened in the past. Uh, with the exception of what has. Just kind of jumped out at us or uh with the. Waterline and stuff, which is obviously the biggest piece of this pack, and then there was a transfer. I had a little issue with, but I'm, I'm over it now, the auditors wanted the transfer made. Um, we typically fund uh C I P, we approve that budget each year, and then we move money. From the general fund once those items are purchased. Uh, the auditors didn't like that, they wanted that funded like any other line item. So the money that has been set aside to pay for those C I P items have been moved into that C I P account. So that's another two hundred and forty some odd thousand dollars that, um, that shows up, so. It's money that was budgeted, it just hadn't been transferred yet, but we did make that transfer at their request, um. They thought that'd be a big help for them next year going forward, so. All of that said, that is all in this amendment and that will make about ninety-nine percent of. All those really negative numbers that have been driving y'all crazy for, uh, the first six months will go away.
Will that affect those, like the miscellaneous lines, the percentages over?
Yes, sir. A lot of what you see, the reports that y'all get each month are kind of scaled down, paired up versions, there's many more line items, and so. Sometimes when you've got, you may only have a few little changes, but when you combine two or three areas, that make it look worse than what it is, but. The, we'd have to print out an entire budget sheet for you guys each year or each month if we did it the other way, so. This would kind of condense it as small as we can, must didn't give you a picture, but all those negatives and. Underfunding will go away.
Second motion, make a prepared petition for me here, thank you. Hey, I've got a. Motion by Shell to approve the mid-year budget amendment and seconded by Mr. Kidd. It's great discussion, all those in favor? Item number two, discuss considering possible action on the three-year agreement after the communications. To provide fiber internet services in the valley of states area.
This is the uh agreement that the council approved. Uh, pending the agreement last month, uh. City attorney drew up the agreement that we uh provided, we cleaned a few things up with pathway, Ray is here. City attorney drew up the agreement that we, uh, provided, we cleaned a few things up with Pathway, Ray is here tonight, if y'all have any questions. But this is the fifty percent match in the amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. That, uh, will be going to Pathway to take, to run that, uh. That project, and, I mean, they, the, the agreement came back, he got it done, um. But the approval last month did not authorize the signing of the agreement, so that's why we brought it back today. And we'll need to get authorization from the mayor to sign that agreement, and Ray, uh, the general manager of Pathway is here, if you guys have any additional questions. He said he's willing to put up with some torture tonight.
Uh, once we get this all approved and everything, what kind of timeframe are we looking?
So, we gotta get material over, I don't like this, we're not gonna order material, obviously, it's, um. Probably six, eight weeks, uh, and then I talked to our contractor today that he's.
All right, how much can this farm, this was going to be in brown, above brown, materials, or probably doing insurance, all, all going. Um, and one of my neighbors asked, does that man wanna have another big box in my yard?
Oh, they won't, so. And go in there. Just so, like, no, go down utility, very important. So, like, in the border. About thousand feet, and so at that point. And there'll be a. Biggest spot there, the back end of the ground. But they will go back in place, saw, they'll. As they, but.
They'll, they'll leave them, will it be at the street or will it be at the back?
I think we decided to leave.
I, I think the majority of them are the back. I think you can mow some of the golf course right there.
For a non-pretty, yeah. And so, uh, does this motion, so they have to state authorizing the assignment or?
It'd be easier because your name's already printed on it, so. I don't want to have to have you change it just to change the name, so, I don't mind not signing them at all, so.
Mayor, I will move to approve three eighty agreement with Pathway Communications to. Fiber of the internet service to mountain valley states, and have the mayor sign the agreement.
Okay, so I have a motion by Johnny and a second by Jellie. To approve the three eighty group, actually communications. Internet services, mountain valley, and authorizing mayor to sign it. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
So, we have five, eight, nine, four, nine, better right now. Nine and.
Well, it's.
Keep it down, let's put it down all the way down.
Okay, we're certainly going here, guys. Um. Discussing possible action funding, uh, drainage impact fee study with new gens. Threatens, it's emissions in the amount of forty thousand dollars, yeah.
So, as y'all know, stormwater runoff and drainage, um, is becoming more and more of an issue, uh, with. Multiple state and federal unfunded mandates and, um. You know, the city was built years back with bar ditches versus stormwater drains, which is what we're doing now. And we've got, there's a lot of areas that are just problematic and, and stay that way, a lot of homeowners can't mow those areas because of the. The, the slopes of the walls and, and, and of course drainage is a utility that. Unfortunately, the state is just a little bit more responsible for it, even though they own the water, so they say. Um. At some point, it is my belief that we're going to have to look at some sort of a drainage impact fee. We have been hesitant to do that, as many of you know, it's not been something, we've tried to absorb it. We can continue to try to absorb it, but at some point, we are gonna have to face. This fact that it's just a problem. We cannot assess an impact fee without a, a study, um, to. Set the parameters of that, there's two different options to do that, option one. Uh, is a, based on the number of residents, it'll put together a, a cost for CIP. And the necessary data and give us some. Kind of guidelines on what the funding could or should be, option two is a more in-depth study. Uh, but it obviously is more expensive and it would include impervious surface calculations, um. Where you've got large parking lots, schools, churches, grocery store, uh, of course. You know, schools and churches, most of the time get exempted out of those, something you can give credit for onsite detention, there, there's a lot of formulas. I think for our size, that's gonna be much more cumbersome than what we need, I think we're, we need. Something simple and basic, uh. Uh, a fee that will either allow us to contract this work or to continue to purchase and approve equipment to do it, we can do some of it. Uh, where we struggle are, where there are, uh. Culverts, uh, sometimes depending on the length of them, we, we don't have the ability to get in and clean those, to blow those out. Um, we have had some, Jayson has helped us a lot of times with the back truck. Um, but that's a million dollar truck, and so it's, it's, you know, you can't just go and buy one. Um, we've got a contractor that's also brought one out, uh, when we've done big projects or multiple projects. But right now, all of that is coming out of public court, street funding money, and as you all know, we have roads to repair also, so this is becoming more and more of a problem. But the first step to doing anything is to have this study done, we've talked about it before, um. And so I, I thought it was time to have that conversation again, uh, we've been, uh, talking with the new gen strategies and solutions, this is their specialty. Uh, you have a, the proposal in front of you, and they have a representative here tonight. If you have any questions about that, uh, it'll be, uh, Andy McCartney will be happy to explain those, and if this is something. Y'all want to take a look at now or.
I like better understand the difference between the two options. I mean, if we're gonna be, depending on what we're gonna be responsible for.
Right, and the, the more expensive option deals with obtaining that aerial imagery. And doing the specific calculations for each customer's parcel, you know, the amount of impervious area where water cannot seep, soak into the ground, so that would be the driveway. Uh, the structures itself, so don't have precise calculation and. Segmenting those properties by their, uh, square footage of the impervious area, so it's much more dated, and so. And it's kind of a more manual process, fortunately.
Are there any challenges that you would anticipate that we basically didn't take that off?
Uh, the biggest one is, you know, getting that aerial imagery, uh. Writing out. What is the hazard? But, uh, at the, uh, Johnson County appraisal district has that, you know, attached to the property records. So, uh, some appraisal districts do have that imagery, but it's just, you know, that's the only thing is they don't have that. Trying to map that specifically to that parcel. And just starting out, we, we buy the two options because generally for a, uh, municipality that's kind of established as one water utility. Just take that step first, before you dive off into bigger study. If, um. And, yeah, we're doing a similar type of, the study, the, the less expensive option for Sanger. Uh, which is up more of the. So, they decided to do, they started, uh. Several ones, and so. Talking to Mr. Peacock.
Or at least in the. Options, what we think in the future and, and our additional.
Well, yeah, in the study, we probably need to be, uh, that's, you know, your, uh. More cost and more of a CIP plan, capture that into your drainage fee. And, and so, uh, yeah, this is just starting out, trying to get, you know. You know, the air balance started for this stormwater utility.
How often do you think this study may be read on?
Probably every three to five years.
Same old, do as well, every?
Uh, yes, because it's starting out. That's why we thought it was the, the least cost alternative, you know, like that, first step, first. Instead of trying to, you know, update it, doing the same thing, just to see how it works, first, you know, your community. And I will tell you, um, I, I'm the former assistant finance director for the, uh. Neighborhood city here, and at least two different occasions, we, uh, had staff to try to get a stormwater utility. Established, but, uh, the council said, no, not at this time, we're okay with it being situated in the general fund. And, and use an ad for lower taxes to fund the stormwater, uh, operations, as part of the transportation, probably worth. Right. I understand, because I used to be a resident of Johnson County, sorry. Because Mike told me, I, I realized that when it did rain here, uh, kind of the flooding problems it causes along the Village Creek. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Currently, we, we have the mandates, how we have to hold floodwater, the, the mandate, state and federal. Correct. Do we foresee in the. foreseeable future where these are going to, I mean, we've got mandates, but because of the size of the city and everything. We're, we're at the low end of what's required. Will, will the study show whether we need to be moved up into that or? No, it's basically.
I, I think what the study will help us do is that there's. There's always grant opportunities out there, a lot of times when you search them out and find them. But almost all state and federal grants, before you can tap those, you gotta have a study, everybody wants.
Yes, yes, will the, will the minimal study? Be enough to qualify with grants? Should. Yeah, it's, it's mainly developing that, for your capital improvement program plan or CIP, and, you know, having that. Utility established and having a fee. Having it recently, uh, that does, you know, show favor. Did we not have this study done? Seven, eight years ago?
We had a study done in two thousand, but it was only in three neighborhoods, Joshua Meadows, the Coalfield area. And Mountain Valley along Village Creek, those were three areas that were studied, but that, that was the only parts.
And I was, I, I remember the study.
And that was, it was a two thousand, it was done by T. Norman Perkins.
Does, does this study, uh. Assess the current areas of water retention and, uh. Things that the city already has in place, or is it just a?
No, it, it's more of a fee study where we look at, you know, we look at the properties and, and to determine. You know, a, a fee is basically a fraction, so you've got the dollars, you know, what it costs to operate, provide stormwater service. And then the, uh, denominator part is, you know, the, the parcels, the sizes. And, and that, it's not, you know, are you, you know, what do you need to do to, to get the stormwater to, to move? That doesn't, but that's more of a professional engineering type of study. So, we're, we're a financial consulting firm specializing, you know, waterways, water, stormwater, solid waste and, uh. Electric utilities.
I've also got some information that we've reached out to, um, T. Nolan Perkins, uh, that has some of that data, uh, uh. We haven't got anything submitted back by them yet, to get some numbers on this more detailed engineering study, just to kind of. To pair with it.
Yeah, we would have to take, you know, what the consulting engineer comes up with for, you know, any capital improvements. Uh, any maintenance activities that they might estimate and put that into the. You know, either the O N M, projected O N M, or into, you know, the CIP plan, which has to be funded some way, either through fees. Or through a debt issuance, and you're probably wanting to just look at, see what you can find through the fees. Okay. Um. That, that person, but you did check with other firms as far as cost and so on and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I mean, any study, do you think, uh? I mean, how many, how many different cities in the municipality, uh? I'm just, oh.
Like recently, we have. We're into Milladun, Sanger, Iwer, uh, Miller Wells, Roanoke, Ash Rock. Any more questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, so. Motion?
Make a motion and we approve. Based on.
Uh, forty thousand?
The forty thousand, yes.
Do you want to say? Yes? And soon.
Will it do that, what, what benefit will it do for his town rep? Mike, if we, we just. Motion the, the forty thousand, can we want the benefit to be down the road, just decide to go with seventy thousand?
The seventy thousand dollar study, it will give us. What my concern is, is that it'll give us. Different classifications, different rates based on the size of the lot, size of impervious surfaces, or a parking lot, is your onsite detention. And I'm afraid it's gonna create a building nightmare for us. And, and that's why at this point, I don't want. To go that route, I would rather be able to assess a flat fee. If, if, if it's at some point approved, this doesn't necessarily mean that. That y'all are gonna approve this thing next year, but. I think this has come up three or four times since I've been here, and we've passed on it each time. Uh. You may do the study and still, next budget year, you may say, no, we're gonna fund it another year out of the general fund, and okay, that's fine, but. If you decide to do it. We would have to have this in place. And with this in place, we can reach out and pursue grant opportunities and other funding opportunities outside. For targeted projects, so it, it's really, it's kind of a baby step. Uh, I'm, I'm not crazy about another fund, I know, or another fee, I know nobody is, but. We also get constant phone calls about flooding and. I mean, there are flooding problems out there, I mean, they're just, they just are.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mike, seconded by Merle, to, uh. Through the funding for the drainage impact fee studies at forty thousand dollars, is there any other discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Next item, discuss consider possible action on approval of an agreement with Alpha Testing, Soil Testing Board, and we just, Peacock.
So, Alpha Testing is a testing firm that we've used in projects in the past, we've used them, fire department, park. Uh, the Park and Ride, the YMCA, all, uh, the soil testing for us, we've used Alpha, this one is another one that will. Uh, get us started as we move through the design phase and the layout of the. The municipal complex, and this puts that agreement in place. Could be that much as projected, depending on what we find, if they hit bedrock, if they don't, there's a lot of things that. Could be that much as projected, depending on what we find, if they hit bedrock, if they don't, there's a lot of things that. Uh could adjust that price a little bit, but uh that's based on the projected square footage of the. Uh which could, could reduce a little bit because the building is a little bit smaller than. Than what the initial layout was, so it, it'd be. Probably a little bit less than that, but this, this gets us set up for the testing, which would probably. Be ready to start doing in the next six weeks or so.
That total cost was four one thousand two hundred and sixty seven dollars and ninety two cents.
Yes, sir, and that would be funded through the funds that have been established um. That's already in-house and for, for that development, so it wouldn't come. Wouldn't come out of reserves, sir.
Move for approval of improvement for testing, soil testing for municipal complex.
Okay, I have a motion by John, seconded by Angela. Agreement about the testing, soil testing for the municipal complex, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next item, discuss consider possible action on policy for beside improvement grant funded by ATDC and Harper. This uh was the. Discussion that we had previously, we sent it back to top A for some changes in what we were looking at. I think they approved them unanimously, if I'm saying correctly. Okay, and uh they're back to us now for our final approval. So. Anybody having questions or motion?
I'm making a motion, we accept. Four one thousand.
No.
No, no, we're talking.
Okay, we have a motion by Merle, seconded by Robert, to approve the policy for solid improvement grant funded through top A, B, C, and Harper.
Do we have anybody interested in that?
We have, because it hasn't, it hasn't been approved, you can wait all this time for it to be approved.
We, we have one person that's. That we've sent a packet to.
So, I mean, that was gonna be my question after we've been voting, will we be able to have a chamber that finally does?
Yep, yeah, we'll get it set out, we'll get it on the website, so we've got one person already and. Maybe a second.
So we have a motion, seconded. Uh any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Yeah, is anybody having questions on any of the staff reports? Okay. Once again, I want to commend our staff for, for the reports that we've got. Our fire department continues to, to improve and. Uh do what they're doing, and I, we'd like the chief counsel to know that they did receive. Comment about the police department just today. Um they were. Upset that they got the ticket, that they knew they deserved it, and the officer. They were, were grateful that we have officers who treated the citizens in respect. And that, that comes from the leadership of us, thank you very much.
Eric, I also had. Here's my contractor today, he said, I met one of your gospel artists this morning. Said, my bill's going up. He said, he was very professional and just appreciating me, and will be passing to the chief.
Like you, that for my department. We take a long time, information lags on. They're very, very thankful for the ability for you guys to assist other agencies and what you've got to.
This collaboration is important.
Shakespearean folk for us, I do not pay. Please, Bill, better add, set forty five this meeting to your. Amy.